Evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the City of Bedendorf Committee, the whole meeting. Today is Monday, December 5th, 2022. It's 5 o'clock. Thank you all for being here. We start today's agenda with a presentation from the Quad City Chamber of Commerce. And for introductions, we'll turn it over to our city administrator, Decker Plane, who is asked to do the honor.
Thank you, Your Honor. The council, in our goal-setting in October, asked if we could have a little more regularity to our business updates from our partners, both at the Chamber and Visit Quad Cities and ByState. And so, as part of what has been kind of a, at least a quarterly update, Julie's been coming, but tonight we have a special treat in Ladrina coming as well. So for those of you that don't know Dr. Ladrina Wilson, she has her PhD in Educational Leadership from Iowa State. She has a master's from Western Illinois and a bachelor's degree in Public Relations and Advertising from Northern Arizona and is a Quad City native. She took over the Chamber as the CEO in July of this year. And Julie is the Senior Vice President for Business and Economic Growth. So you've got the power of the Chamber sitting in front of you. And we thought our regular update not only would be helpful, but since Ladrina took over as CEO, we thought that introducing her to you, as well as her giving you some perspective on what she now sees after about six months, might be helpful. So with that, Julie and Ladrina, or Ladrina and Julie, depending on who's going to take what first.
Welcome, ladies. We're glad you're here.
Thank you. Do I need to? Can you hear me okay?
Nope, we got you.
Okay, perfect. Well, first and foremost, I appreciate the invitation to be able to chat with you all. I see a couple of familiar faces and online as well, and so, nice to see folks again. I just wanted to share a little bit with you all, specifically as it relates to how I see the work of the Quad Cities Chamber, the work that we're doing in our Business and Economic Growth area, and the continued partnership that we have here with the City of Bedendorf. As you know, we take a regional approach to our business and economic growth. We look at what's happening across the region. We get RFPs, excuse me, RPIs? Am I using the wrong letters? But we have our site selectors that use a regional approach to really vet the assets that are across the region. Julie will give you additional details about how that's been going. But I do want to let you know that the power of the team is pretty dynamic and highly impactful. They work on a number of projects over the year. I believe we went over about 57 projects that have come in as potential businesses here in the region. And this work entails really selling the assets that are here that you provide in your city, but the assets across the region. For folks that are familiar with Business and Economic Growth, you know that if you have 57 projects that you're working on, you're lucky to get a yield of one or two. And so sometimes it can be very hard for people to see what's actually happening behind the scenes, but I like to equate the work that Julie and her team do as ducks on a pond. So while they may seem like they're going across the water like this, their feet are flapping like crazy underneath. And they continue to position our region, and specifically this city, as a place that people want to live, work, and play. She's going to give you some specific details about projects that she has and how her team has been spending their time over the past year or so, but I want to let you know that Bedendorf continues to be a great partner, to the extent that you do think regionally. It's hard sometimes for people to recognize that by your investment in the Chamber and allowing us to really feature this area as a region, irrespective of where a business locates it, it's a win for all of us, because people are going to live all over our Quad Cities. And as you all know, you have had a lot of growth in terms of your population growth, comparatively speaking, and people are choosing this community. So irrespective of where a business locates, we do truly see this as an opportunity for the city to continue to partner with us, so that we can attract new businesses here. Additionally, we have benefited from partnerships separate from this, but our downtown Bedendorf organization continues to think regionally as well, in creating amenities and assets and experiences for people not only in Bedendorf, but also across the Quad City region. If you go in the Wayback Machine, a lot of folks didn't even necessarily know that there was a downtown Bedendorf. It wasn't clearly identified. And so we continue to work at the Chamber to make sure people know all that is great that's happening here in the downtown area as well. So with that, the last thing that I would leave you with is, we have been doing quite a bit of listening. Decker's been part of some of those listening sessions and representing the interests of the city, both in the board capacity and also providing guidance, leadership, and input, same with the mayor. And I think that's a humble posture that we will continue to have at the Chamber. We do not have all the answers, but it's our responsibility to really have our ear to the ground, to be able to hear what's important to the people in this region. And so as we do that and move into the next strategic phase for our organization, we're in year three of a three-year work plan, and as we round the corner on that, we hope that you, as investors in the Chamber, see your fingerprint on the final product that is our strategic plan. I don't imagine that our work will look incredibly different, but I do think the measures around how we measure success might. We recognize that it needs to resonate with not just what industry jargon is as it relates to a successful Chamber, but really what matters here in the Quad Cities. Things we've heard include net new jobs, not just how many projects are we getting in the community, but how many people are getting really real and meaningful employment. And so we'll continue to listen, and I want to let you know as a council, you have excellent staff here in the city that do provide your feedback to us, so that we can make sure that we are honoring what you think is important in our region. And with that, I will turn it over to Julie to give some particulars around how her and her team have been spending their time.
Here's Ladrina, Mayor, Decker, Council, Staff. Good to see everybody.
Julie, pull your mic a little bit closer.
Sure. How's that?
Yeah, perfect.
Okay, good. I'm going to move pretty quickly here. So who we are, we're a nonprofit dedicated. We want a prosperous region where all can thrive, six counties, again, regionally. What we do, we really fill that space where we're facilitating business growth by advocating for business, providing resources, and building networks. Tonight, we're going to talk about Business and Economic Growth, but as you can see by the pillars there, there's three major areas that we work in, supported by a strong Chamber. This is our flywheel, and this is important because it really shows why we're in the segments that we're in. Investment in the region helps support existing business, helps the placemaking and place management, a place where people want to be, which in turn attracts and retains the people in the workforce that our businesses need, both the existing businesses and the businesses that are looking to come to the region. Here's the team. We're a sector-based outreach organization, so Chris Caves does manufacturing and defense, Tammy Petchy, corporate office, logistics, and warehouse, and we have two on our project management team that manages all the projects, both expansion locally and then our attraction. So as a reminder, we do external marketing for the region. That comes in both traditional and digital formats, and so there's a lot of ads and marketing that goes out to targets outside of our region. That's why you don't see them. Those come back as leads to the Chamber that we work. So we do outreach to site selectors. We talk to decision-makers at companies, and we also talk to multipliers, and that's anybody that helps make a decision about getting a business here to the region and can be supportive of that. So as Ladrina mentioned, large pipeline, we're lucky if we get one or two. We were lucky to get one. You may have seen this in June, announced the groundbreaking for the Fair Oaks Foods specialty bacon plant. It's a very technologically advanced plant, but it's $182 million annual economic impact to the region. This is the 12th largest black-owned business in the United States that chose to expand here, so we are very lucky to have them. This actually came about because Tammy Petchy and our team had a relationship with a site selector, and we had another project that was codenamed Project Silver, and that went down the path pretty far, but we ended up being number two. And in business attraction, you don't get anything for number two. But it was because of that relationship that she had, the site selector remembered the Quad Cities and called it. So that's why we're always working those relationships. So this was a relationship success project, for sure. So we manage lots of projects, prospects, both in the lead generation area, but also the project management. So we're the single point of contact for the entire region, is projects come in from the state. If they come in from Iowa, we can only look at Iowa. If they come in from Illinois, we can only look at Illinois. If it's a lead sourced anywhere else, it's fair game, and we can try to get them anywhere in the Quad Cities region that makes sense based on their search criteria. And then another thing that you all look for us to do is identify emerging trends and really understand what site selectors are wanting. And so right now, we have a targeted industry study underway. It's the second one. We already did one on two of our major sectors, ag and food processing and manufacturing. This one, due in February, is going to tell us what we need to know about corporate office, which is going to be very interesting to see, based on everything that happened during COVID. And then also warehouse distribution and defense. So we will share that with all of our economic development partners, so that they can understand as well what's going on out there. We hosted a site selector familiarization tour this summer, and so that was inviting four site selectors to come to the Quad Cities and be on the ground and really understand what it's like to be here. It's one thing to talk about it, it's one thing to send them photos, it's another thing to send them a video, but it's entirely different to be there, be here. And so we feel that this is a really great way to show the assets of the region and the people and the workforce that make up the region, the partners that we have. And so we did a number of things over three days, one of which was they got a chance to have roundtable discussions with business owners, business leaders, what is it actually like to do business in the region? There were some Bedendorf businesses involved with that. We took them around in a land jet all throughout the region, worked with our partners. Jeff helped get us set out at the TBK Bank Complex and one of the restaurants out there for all the workforce partners to meet and talk to them about workforce training and education in the pipeline within the region. They also had a chance to meet with the site selectors one-on-one, as we hosted different events. So total immersion experience, trying to get them on the ground, really understand our area, and so that is something that was very successful, and we hope to do that again on a more regular basis moving forward. Key takeaways, these are all the items that they said are extremely important to them in when they're looking at regions, and we score very high on all of these. And I will say that really Jeff did a great job sharing the story, that was really able to provide evidence of speed to market and regional collaboration, talking about the whole process of getting the TBK Bank Complex up and running and how everybody worked together on that. And they really gave us some good insights, so again, helping to bring information to you and all of our regional partners about what we need to do to be more competitive. It's something we always need everybody's help with, and we appreciate that. Within business retention and expansion, we do outreach to our primary industry businesses through our Business Connection programs. That means we go out and talk to them, what's working, what's not working, do you have plans to expand, what's keeping you from growing and understanding that. Workforce is the number one issue that is keeping businesses from expanding. We've done a lot of resources in that particular area over the last year, and really mapping out who are all the different, right now, workforce resources that businesses can leverage, so that they can get the talent they need. All kinds of technical assists and resource facilitation, so we keep track of those over our time. One of the biggest lifts that we did for Bedendorf is there was grant dollars available through the Iowa Economic Development Authority, manufacturing 4.0 grants. The point of those grants is to help businesses invest in technology that they otherwise wouldn't be able to do on their own, and help them with that risk. So there are four companies here that Chris Caves, provide them opportunity of letting them know that this is a grant that's available to them and helped walk them through that process. And you can see the awards, that's a total of $1.5 million in grant awards going to these Bedendorf businesses. Again, investment in technologies to increase their capacity. These do not supplant workforce. It allows them to do more and take some of those folks and upskill them into other roles. So we're happy that that was a big success. And then also, we were just awarded in the last quarter here, a grant that you may have heard about. It's additional support for our manufacturing and defense contractors. So it'll be $675,000 to the Quad Cities over five years regionally, to help our manufacturing and defense sector. And it will do things such as help create a center of excellence model for digital castings and foundries, also supply chain diversification, and then also building a skilled workforce focusing on introducing minority and women communities to manufacturing. So those are some of the high notes. We're working on that program of work, and that's what we've been working on since I think the last time I saw you here. I'm happy to take any questions, if you have any.
Any questions for our friends at the Chamber looking left? Yes, Scott?
Thank you, Your Honor. So when the Chambers merged in 2010, we started really publicly advocating for a regional model, and yet we would often hear that when folks would look at our community, they would see us not as a region, but as individual communities and so forth, like the Trader Joes and so forth. They didn't really care. We're like, we're 500,000 people here. I wonder if the bridge, is it too soon yet to tell the impact of, because it's so darn easy to cross now, does that then translate into how they look at us and how they traverse through our community to truly be a region?
Go ahead.
Well, first I would say, I wish we were 500,000. That would be really great news. We're about 450,000.
Well, when you look at the grand, you know, the area we touch, I mean, I think that it's pretty close. I mean, but I just don't know.
He's an optimist.
Yeah. I think there are a few things that are underway.
40,000 people in Bedendorf.
I knew that was going to come up. That was a soft.
59,106.
So I would say that there are a few things that are in place that aren't necessarily specific to the Chamber, but certainly we support and champion. Part of the regional thinking has happened internally, and now it's time for us to move it externally. If you drive our I-8 corridor, there's no reference to the Quad Cities. You don't know us, you know that you're in Davenport, you know that you're in Bedendorf. We still don't have that kind of, to that external-facing potential, you know, customer or visitor and that type of thing. So I think there's some branding things that we could do to enhance that. I do think that from the work, the perspective of what, you know, the team does in Business and Economic Growth, we're a lot further along than even we are in the space of placemaking and how people experience our community from a livability and vibrancy type of perspective. While I think from the inside, we would hope that things would move a little bit quicker, I can tell you that there's a little bit more context for what the Quad Cities is as I travel outside of the area as well. So I think we're making baby steps. I think the bridge is still really new for people to, you know, to see us in that way, but I do think there's some work that's happening across the region that will enhance what's already there in that asset of the bridge. But I also think we have an opportunity to expand on the river as being in the Quad Cities, right? And how we talk about that as an asset for the Quad Cities. So there's some things that are in the works, and we have a ways to go.
So does that regional Quad City brand, is that, do we think, a Chamber initiative?
It started off that way, and I think we all have ownership for it now. We'll continue to beat that drum, and I don't see that changing, because to your point around how do people see us as a six-county region, we need that, especially for Business and Economic Growth. I can't answer to, I think it's another place that would be an advantage to it, is, to an extent, the work around the Rock Island Arsenal. Yes, it's on Rock Island, but that is a regional asset. And so the more we play up those regional assets and recognizing how many folks are actually employed as it relates to the arsenal and kind of just really, no matter where they come from, Iowa, Illinois, Bedendorf, wherever it is that they are, we need to continue to beat that drum, and we continue to carry that message in every space that we get. Now, what happens when people decide they want to do their own parochial type of thing? You know, we advocate to keep going the regional route, but there is a sense of pride around some of the specific communities. I think my guidance would be is, it's okay to have pride in what your part of the region is, but let's not duplicate effort. Let's make sure that we're working alongside one another to not try to reinvent the wheel if it's already a neighboring community.
Thank you, thank you, Your Honor.
You're welcome. Other questions? All right. Ladrina and Julie, thank you very much for being here today. We appreciate that. You're welcome to stick around for the rest of the meeting, but if you have other things to do, we certainly would understand if you're leaving, especially since they apparently fed us, thinking they're going to keep us for several hours this evening.
All right.
It'll be here a while.
I want to say thank you for the opportunity for us to be able to share a little bit about what we do with you, but also thank you for your service. My time at the Chamber has allowed me to be able to attend quite a few more council meetings than I had in the past. And so it's not lost on me how much time, effort, and energy you all put into what you do, so thank you for being willing to do that.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, team. All right. Mark's going to have a whole bunch here, Your Honor.
Mark's got a seven spot today, so he's going to come to the front, and I'm sure we get some pictures and all kinds of things, as he attacks many of your consent agenda items.
Some of these would be multiple presentations in one, Your Honor, so...
Understandable. These first several look to be that kind of a thing. I, J, and K, L.
N, O, P.
Darrell Brickner from FG Holdings is here, in case we have questions, as we start going that direction, because we start with FG Holdings. Ladies and gentlemen, the Director of Community Development, Mr. Mark Hunt, you have the floor.
Thank you, Your Honor. Members of the council, I just need a couple seconds here to load my presentation. It is saved on the drive. I just got to get to it.
Is Alderman Nowman keeping that seat?
You have first dibs, no worries, Lisa. It's a tonight-only bargain.
Alderman Sexter announced that he had a cold, and so Alderman Nowman moved rapidly to your seat.
Jerry's always so willing to share.
Thanks, Scott.
All right, Mark, you have the floor.
The good news is, I am recovered. I no longer have it. I've tested negative.
Hey, I thought it was funny.
It was funny.
It was. All right, to the matter at hand, Mr. Hunt.
Your Honor, it pleases you and the council, I will provide you a presentation that combines multiple cases, if that's okay. So...
Totally fine. We'll ask questions at the end.
So I'm going to go case 22072, 073, 074, and 084. Do we have it? Bingo. That's lots one, two, and three of FG 80 Holdings. You're going to be very familiar with this site by the time I'm done with this, and I've done some kind of cute color coding on my presentation that I think you're really going to be impressed with, at least I was. And lot four of FG 80. This is a hard story to tell, folks. It really, it's a great story to tell, but it's a little bit hard to tell, just to keep all the subdivision, plat, lot numbers all in shape here. So I've done my best. I'm sure this is a piece of property you're all familiar with. This is FG 80. We have two applicants involved in these four cases. Applicant one, color-coded, I will call that a yellow or an orange, is Kevin Kellner, lots one, two, and three. They're going to be kind of in this quadrant when we get a little closer in here. And color-coded in that brown is Joel Jackson, Bishop Engineering, lot four. He's representing McDonald's Corporation, FG Holdings 81st Edition. Don't get too lost into what addition, what subdivision we're in. Just kind of orient yourself on the map, and we'll just kind of go from there. There's going to be some amended plats coming in anyway. You may have noticed you don't see a final plat for some of these items. That's because we were already aware of changes that are coming down the road. So these are all site development plans, four buildings on four lots. And again, I'm not going to spend a lot of time talking about which subdivision we're in, because really, once you orient yourself, you'll be fine. Proposed uses are office, retail, restaurant, and fast food. Just some background information, we do have a C3 zoning district here. We have a future land use that is community commercial. These are all consistent uses, nothing to really mention here. Okay, remember our color coding. Kevin Kellner's the yellow or orange color, and the brown coloring is Joel Jackson, who's representing McDonald's Corporation. So we'll kind of go through all three of these, and we'll leave that color coding, so you know which one we're talking about. The star matches Kevin Kellner's applications, and the brown color matches Joel Jackson and McDonald's. So here's a final plat. Again, this final plat is going to be updated, so we're not bringing it to you today. We're just bringing you the site development plans. We have lots one, two, and three of FG Holdings Third Edition. And lot four up here is not part of the subdivision, but I won't bore you with the names because they're so similar. Getting a little closer to the site plan, let's start with the first one. We have a strip mall here. It's an office use, 64 stalls of parking, they've got 40 required. Of course, there's a built at the Crosses Park throughout this entire site. Vehicle access points come in from the north and from the east. We do have some turnarounds built in here at the top of this site, if you will. We have a dumpster located in the northwest corner. It will be screened. We have sidewalk connectivity on the southeast corner, and we are recommending service walks be built by the developer to connect the public as they walk back and forth between these buildings. We know the use of this site being sports and entertainment, people are going to go back and forth from restaurants to games and so forth.
So are those service sidewalks on the map, or they're not?
They're not on the map. We're going to let the developer kind of figure out the best spot to put those, based on parking and where they end up putting equipment and those type of things. And those will all be private service walks, those won't be city-owned. The sidewalks, of course, will be in our right-of-way. So this is case 22072. We're going to keep going right down the line here. We'll stay with the star, the yellow star here, to denote where we're at. Here's your landscaping plan. We've got a pretty healthy tree factor here of 14 and a half, that meets our requirement, and you'll see a similar fashion as we move on down the line. Now we're next door. We just moved one lot to the east. This is case 22073. Again, uses the same infrastructure to get in, the same shared parking spaces, multiple points for vehicle access coming, you know, north, south, east, and west. We have a dumpster location that is screened, and we have the same sidewalk connectivity. This one, we don't have the service walks called out, per se, but again, this is all hardscape lot. It doesn't connect directly to another lot, or it doesn't have a boundary between another lot that would need a service walk across that boundary, excuse me. Here's your landscape plan, 15 tree factor, very similar to the previous one. They're just going to do the edges, plant where they can to get their tree factors And now we're at lot three. We've just moved another one to the east. 72 stalls, this is the biggest of these three strip malls. They only need 53 to meet the uses that they proposed. Again, multiple vehicle access points. We're coming in off Competition Drive, which is the horseshoe-shaped drive here. Screen dumpsters, inside wall connectivity. I think you're getting the pattern. Here's some elevations of what the strip malls will look like in general, so the front will have the main entries, and there'll be, of course, signage above these doors, and then the rear employee entrance, parking, that type of thing. And then your landscape plan. This one has the largest tree factor, it is the largest lot, so that makes sense, meets all our requirements, and we're also working on tree diversity, so that's something we're going to try and be a little more specific on as staff going forward, is to maybe get away from everything being maple trees, so we're going to work on tree diversity. It's not really in our code, it's just a goal we have internally. So that finishes the Kevin Kellner aspects of this presentation. I'm going to move on to the northwest, so to orient yourself, we just went cattywampus to the northwest. This is a fast food use, McDonald's, 50 stalls, 29 required, so it's well-parked. Two vehicle access points to get into the site, here, on the east side. We'll have a screen dumpster, we'll have sidewalk connectivity on the northeast corner, and we're recommending service walks to the adjoining lot. Most of this is done through striping. One of the things we're really trying to avoid in the Building Department or Community Development Department is getting locked in, so we don't want to have people that can't bail out. So what you see here is also done with striping. These are not walled or curbed. So if people are in those lines and they want to bail, they can. We've learned some lessons with some other developments, so I just wanted to point that out to you, that's not a walled or curbed driveline. That is... We've learned some lessons with some other developments, so I just wanted to point that out to you. That's not a, not a walled or curbed driveline. That is completely available, if that's a word. Plenty of stacking and ADA spaces are marked and they'll be required, of course. Our tree factors here, they're not shown in green, but you can see the outlines. We've got 13 tree factors. They meet our requirements. McDonald's very particular and does actually a very good job in their landscaping, so we don't expect any problems there. Now, this is where you get some extra credit because what I tried to do was match the colors of the McDonald's logo and the McDonald's building with the themes throughout the presentation to kinda keep you oriented and also bring it all back together. So hopefully that was not missed by my audience. So here's your elevation of the McDonald's. It's a more modern building than what we were used to, the McDonald's we all grew up with or remember from the past. A little smaller profile. It will fit the surrounding environment, I think, very well. So I have some recommendations for you. I'll combine a few of them and then I'll kinda go back over and answer any questions you might have. So again, color-coded here. We're doing the yellow star. This is the Kevin Kellner application, 22-072 specifically on lot one of FG 80. Staff did recommend approval with the two conditions you see there and it was recommended unanimously by the Planning and Zoning Commission on 11/16.
Because they grew up with McDonald's.
22073 and 22074, these are both Kevin Kellner, again, applications for the other strip malls, the other two strip malls. We have slightly different conditions with the interior pedestrian walks being one of those. We did have a positive stack recommendation and approval from the Planning and Zoning Commission on the 16th of November. And then case 22084, this is a McDonald's applicant was Joel Jackson representing McDonald's Corporation. It's case 22084. Service walks were one of the conditions required, similar to the others. And we did have a positive staff recommendation and a positive zoning commission recommendation. That gets us through the first four cases, I think.
I, J, K and L.
And I'm happy to answer any questions. I went as fast as I could.
How about some questions on I, J, K or L? Looking right? Looking left? We'll go building Scott then Greg.
Is one of the conditions for McDonald's, based on the fact the site development plan has no validity until such time as the final plat is approved?
We could add that as a condition.
I think that's important.
Yeah, so what happened is I think they wanna, they wanna combine and make the plats a little more sensible so that some of the lots aren't in separate plats that are on that island, if you will. And that's really what's gonna happen. But we haven't brought that forward and because of some of the business considerations, we didn't wanna delay that. But I think that would be a great condition and I would be happy to include that in the packet tomorrow.
And then we also go back to the overall site development plan of the entire site. I wanna see how McDonald's is gonna be accessed again.
Tell me when I get to the one you want. Probably.
Go forward.
Look, this one?
Over there.
Sorry.
No, that's, that's fine.
Right there, Mark.
So the only access to McDonald's is basically through adjoining parking lots?
Yeah, you gotta come in through the north or the east.
Is that acceptable to public safety people? That's the roundabout on middle to upper-left and this is whatever that is.
Competition, maybe?
Yep, competition.
Competition, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we didn't.
What you talked about is like Mark was talking about with the not having a curved drive-through which allows better accessibility to move in and out just in case there was an incident. They do have plenty of lane width and what have you for emergency access from the radius and everything when we initially took a look at this.
It is, Bill, it is sized for buses. That's what the four parking stalls on the south end, which would be equivalent to our width. And if you look at the radius coming in off Competition, as you had east, you can see that's enlarged also.
Yeah, okay.
Part of that was due to the lot configuration relative to the roundabouts. We had to get that sufficiently far enough a way that we did not impact traffic back into the roundabout.
That, that I understand. Okay, thank you. Scott?
Thank you, Your Honor. Can you refresh the Council's memory on the bailout lane policy? Because I think we all have agreed that there's a need for that. I love seeing it here, but is, where are we going with those?
Well, I think it will be a policy. It's, it's right now, I'm gonna say more staff procedure at this point, so we've just been recommending it. And everybody we've brought it up to has, since we've had that recent development, has totally bought into it. I think with the new zoning ordinance that will come post-comp plan, we can just add that in there. That stacking requirement that has to, has to build in the bailout somehow.
Thank you.
Greg?
Thank you, Your Honor. Refresh my memory, wasn't there supposed to be a hotel someplace?
Mm-hmm, there is. That is not on the contemplated. Let me try and get back to a better picture here. So that would have been in this location. It's just not one of the site development plans that we're bringing forward today. That will be forthcoming by the developer in the future. So these are not a comment on that. It's just, they haven't brought that forward yet.
But that's, that's tentatively where it would.
Yeah, still in the game plan, yep.
Mark, if you go back to the FG 80 site plans, it actually shows a true footprint.
Why did I put so many slides in here?
Our east lot, yeah.
Right here, I think, is the best we got, Brent?
Lot three, if you go to that one. It shows the full. There you go.
Here.
I got one more.
There you go. So that is an actual footprint for the proposed hotel. They are just not ready to bring forward the site plan yet.
Thank you. Thank you, Your Honor.
You bet. Lisa, do you have any questions?
No, no.
Jeff, did you have something you wanted to add?
Just one quick item of note for Councilmember Nauman, Your Honor. When we looked at this on the escape lane, if you will, in the development review, we noted that McDonald's is probably one of the strongest practitioners of such a model and we thought it'd be a good prototype to help us build that case because they obviously have such a great success with utilizing that sort of model, similar to Chick-fil-A or those others. They've, they've pretty much figured it out. So we were hopeful that that would be a good test case for us as we put that policy together.
Now you guys wanna talk? All right, Jerry then Frank.
Thank you, Your Honor. Follow-up question.
I'm gonna start going left first.
Well, a follow-up question to a question we already had. On the hotel, will we have, will we have appropriate service sidewalks connecting to the hotel? Since that's not currently part of the package, will the developer require these individual lots to put in the appropriate sidewalks?
I think we'd make that recommendation when we saw the site development plan that the hotel put those in.
All right, thank you. And then another question on sidewalks is on Competition Drive, who does snow removal on that sidewalk? Each individual owner?
No, the, Mark, the city will actually do competition because there's gonna be an eight-foot walk on either side of Competition Drive.
Okay, thank you.
Eight-foot trail, I should say. That won't get built till our next phase, next spring, but that will be a city trail.
But snow removal on the interior ones?
Interior is them.
Is all developers?
Correct.
Thank you.
Frank?
Thank you, Your Honor. Mark, can you go back to the slide that shows the McDonald's and the landscaping?
I can.
Okay. That in and out right there, I'm assuming that that tree is going to be back far enough to give sight view for people coming and leaving the parking lot area?
Yeah, we'll make sure that they don't put them in the, in the sight line. And if they are, they can move them. You know, this is a little bit of a generalization here, so they have plenty of room to move a little bit to the north and, you know.
Okay.
Okay, anything else on these items? All right, then I'd like to entertain a motion that Consent Agenda I remain on tomorrow night's agenda.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, same motion for J?
No moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, K?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And L, please?
Will move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. I, J, K and L will remain on tomorrow night's Consent Agenda for approval by Council. We move to Consent Agenda M.
Thanks, Your Honor. Members of the Council, this is case 22087. It's at 2564 Middle Road. It's a site development plan. You're gonna be very familiar with this area of town. We had a lot of development here. It's near the vintage co-op apartments or condos, if you will. The zoning in this area is C2, just north of Middle Road. What's coming before you is not the original site development plan. You may remember of a memory care type of facility that was gonna be built. Those plans are off the table. The district's coming through with a townhouse-type style development. I would note, it's also got a future land use designation of community commercial. The proposed use fits both in the zoning and existing, existing zoning and future land use. Here's the final plat. It's already been through this body and just showing you the outline of this lot. It's a little bit of an odd-shaped lot, kind of flag-shaped. It does have access points to the south, coming through the Northwest Bank parking lot and to the north, connecting to Happy Joe Drive. Here you get a look at the site development plan. So much less dense, if, if you will, from what was originally proposed. I think that was a 64-unit complex. This is just 30 townhomes, has a floor area ratio, the acronym FAR, floor area ratio of 62%. That's well below the threshold, so that's the total area of all levels compared to the total area of, of the land, which is 62% or 62% ratio of floor area to land. We have 5,733 square feet per unit of land. They only need 3,000 square feet. Again, so we're meeting our density calculations here and that's the point of those two numbers. We've got utilities following the existing easements, same with water as well. Stormwater actually falls to the north, just off the map on an outlot of the adjoining property. And we do have a traffic study that can be conducted following this development's completion and then that will lead us to triggering our agreement for a possible turn lane or traffic control. And Brent will be taking care of that, but right now we've gotta get through the building phase before we actually trigger that study.
Seriously?
I'm sorry.
So the buildings are gonna be occupied before we do the study?
I believe they were gonna let them permit the building and then do the study.
Oh, okay, just issue the permits.
We probably oughta have them, you gotta know who's coming and going, right?
Yeah, the actual, the way it read was full build-out.
Yeah.
Of the building. We need to know where the traffic's going, whether they're actually using Happy Joe or whether they're coming out on the middle. Because that's what we actually, if you remember, we did a traffic study for this whole development, but we used projected numbers. And it projected that it would still function, but we all saw some skepticism in the results of that, using the projections. So that's why we need to do an actual traffic study with actual splits to be able to see which way the traffic is going. That's how the agreement read.
Obviously, there're gonna be a lot more trips from this site than there would be from a memory care unit.
Agreed. Yep, absolutely.
Let's go back to the landscape plan. So here's your landscape plan, mainly pushed off to the west side where you'll be fitting in all the required landscaping. Of course, you have hardscape and you have travel easements to the west side, so that's the main location for that. It's also buffering that commercial development that would be to that direction. Some interior plantings as well. These are private drives on the interior, private drive lanes really on the interior. Your right-of-way is really just Happy Joe Drive coming in from the north. Kind of a modern look, three-story townhomes, lots of glass on the front, some kind of cupulos or awnings. Fairly good architecture seems to match with vintage co-op that's there already. We did have a positive staff recommendation and we did have a positive recommendation from Planning and Zoning Commission. There are a few conditions before you. Nothing out of the ordinary, to be honest with you. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions to Mark?
Greg? So there's 30 units.
Mm-hmm, in three and four.
Each one of those is an individual residence?
Yeah, 30 individual residences.
Three stories?
Yep.
Okay.
Okay. Yeah, Bill? I'd still like a clarification on the traffic study. Normally, if you're gonna do a traffic study, you do that prior to occupancy of the, the site. I don't know if the agreement restricts you from doing that traffic study now based on what assumed trips from this new development is going to be?
So that's exactly what we did, Bill. We had Chive run one for the entire development. I realize there will be more trips coming out of here, but that also projected traffic from, coming from the lot that remains on Middle. So that traffic that was assumed to be a fairly high-intense commercial use still didn't trigger that. So the fact that we're adding 300, yeah, if you go by the book, 300 trips a day from the townhome unit with still no traffic being generated from that commercial lot, it's almost certainly gonna be apples to apples. It's really until we see where those are all going, that's when it makes the most sense to run one. So we still, I can be happy to send that to you, but we have that study that Chive did.
Okay, please do that.
Sure.
Jerry?
Thank you, Your Honor. I have a question. Where does the city's portion of Happy Joe Drive on this, on this drawing? Is that on the northwest or northeast corner? Is that all city street up there?
No.
Not until, it's actually off the map that you see here, so it would be up to the north, this.
So none of that there, even though it's labeled Happy Joe Drive, that's not part of the cities?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
All the, all the roadway on the ewing property is private.
Okay.
By no city services.
Second question is, you'd be disappointed if I didn't ask a sidewalk question. On this drawing, they show all their sidewalks as only four foot. Does our five-foot requirement apply to?
Not for private interior walks. They don't.
Doesn't, okay. I guess, I would recommend it, but if our ordinance doesn't require it. And then the other thing is, does their private sidewalks connect to city sidewalks? Does it go out to Middle Road or does it go to Happy Joe so that people can walk over to Wendy's or walk over to Hungry Hobo? Or they have to get in their, have to get in their car and drive to Hungry Hobo?
Yeah, they could, they could walk through the property, but they don't have a right-of-way for us to require a sidewalk to be placed on.
Yeah, because that was an existing driveway. So that was the Northwest Bank driveway and they never made any amendments to that or changes. Everything was north of them, just access through there.
Hey, Your Honor?
Yes, Lisa?
I know that property, the difficulty with it was always that it was landlocked and I don't, because the map's up, I don't remember how much more can be developed. But it seems silly, and then tying in with Bill's question, it seems silly that we've always, you know, we're running traffic through the bank. We're running traffic now through Happy Joe's Drive. Is there some point at which we're gonna need to inquire, maybe acquire some property and create a city street that will solve this? I don't know, it just seems silly. We're running traffic through a bank and through all these strange locations. And I don't even know if there's an answer. It's an answer for down the road, but maybe that's something we need to look at, if it's even possible. Because it's landlocked, it might not be something that's possible. Does that make sense?
I think your question and thought does make sense. I think there'll be, I mean, is that something we wanna do on private property if this is how they wanna develop it and we, it's our standards and ordinances?
Your Honor, we looked at that during the initial ewing and it was, could we push a city street out to the north to tie into Tech Drive? And you have to build a bridge there at that point to cross it, which obviously is not feasible for a secondary access when they were able to obtain a private access easement.
Okay.
Yes, Chief. I, the thing is, I just, and correct me if I'm wrong, there is not an issue currently going on with the current situation. I don't believe we've got any issues up there the way it is now at all, so I just, I mean, I just wanna be clear because.
And we are about to go live in a couple of days with the new traffic signal at Middle and 29th. And I think you all remember, we've talked about the ability, because we did not have a traffic control device between AAA Court and Spruce Hills. There was no capping there. That's why that left is so hard to get out. It's incredibly busy through there. We'll be able to control those gaps and hopefully provide some, some safer left turns out of there once that signal goes live.
Okay.
Okay, and I've got another question then. Can you give me an example? Okay, and I've got another question then. Can you give me an example? In the city of another area, we've got a private access from a development. Brett was just referring to. Is there another area where we're going through a, for private access?
The villas, the villas up at Devil's Glen is totally through private streets.
Okay.
The exit by the, you exit by Coffee Hound, you exit by out to Middle Road through a private drive that ultimately connects you to a city street by Fairway.
Yeah.
All the, all the back side of Cumberland Square.
Through a parking lot.
All of the whole back of Cumberland Square is all private, private roads.
Yeah.
Okay, okay. I was just trying to think here. All right.
Other questions? All right, I'd like to entertain a motion that consent agenda M remain on tomorrow night's consent agenda.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? We'll take up consent agenda M tomorrow. If you want to move over to consent N as a Nancy for us, please, Mark.
Sure, this is sixty-five hundred block of Valley Drive. This applicant is Scott Pierce with Blue Water Group. I believe they make spas, tubs, those type of things for home use. This is a preliminary plat. Current use off of Valley Drive is ag. Proposed uses are four lots, three developable and one outlot for stormwater. It'll be industrial manufacturing for the spa use, spa facility. The Bobby Smith office is located with that as well, and then some storage, a storage component. And then another lot that will be probably build the suit, if you will. Just some future land use map and zoning map here, so we have industrial on both. These are all industrial uses, and so they do comply. Lot of floodplains. So everything you see in blue is a floodplain, so all but the very middle of the site are actually in the floodplain. They will have to meet our floodplain, our model floodplain ordinance will require two feet above, which they should be able to do on the site. We are going to have them get a colmer from FEMA, basically a comment letter from FEMA, just to make sure FEMA weighs in on this. But we don't see any problem from a floodplain development perspective, as long as they do meet our, our code. Preliminary plat, again, three lots for development, one for outlot. There will be dedication of right of way for a street. Future plan is maybe someday this street would connect all the way through, so you'd have a north-south-ish connection between Valley Drive and Highway sixty-seven. And here's a very general and honestly changing concept plan. So the Blue Water Group would locate their office headquarters and manufacturing facility here. This would be a future development for another industrial user. And then probably just one set in the near term, if you will, of contractor condos. They'll probably be expanding this area for a little bit larger stormwater area. So this, this portion of the lot probably won't have quite as many contractor condos, if any, on it at all. But again, we're just looking at the preliminary plat today, so that site development plan will be coming to you at a future date when we have a final plat. Again, just some basic elevation concepts here for the contractor condos. We did have a positive staff recommendation and a positive planning and zoning commission. Of course, floodplain development permits are required. We're also requiring the colmer from FEMA and access easement is supposed to be shown for lot three. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Questions? Bill and Greg. So I know that there may be a proposed street that will eventually contact, connect to State Street, but how staff feel about all this industrial traffic exiting onto Valley Drive alone?
Yeah, we already have a lot with the trucking company or Republic Company there, so that use does exist. Valley Drive and that area has been zoned industrial for a long time. It's now kind of starting to turn. As far as total traffic counts, I don't know. It does, does put a lot of pressure on the old highway or Valley Drive.
It does, but unfortunately, they would be landlocked if we didn't give them access to Valley Drive. That is the only, because they were not able to acquire the other two pieces to the south.
So, so what's, what's your opinion of dumping more industrial traffic onto Valley Drive?
Definitely not ideal. There's no doubt about it. We need that second connection to help relieve some of that. So that's, I think, kind of the trade-off here is hopefully they're able, their plans would be to acquire the other two pieces. They're trying to work with the other, the piece to the immediate south is another family member, and then the third piece is going to be a little more difficult, but you know, kind of similar to what we've done with Criswell, trying to at least secure the right of way and get anything that we can get built for the future.
Not ideal, but I guess.
Well, I think the, to Bill's point, I mean, I think we always thought there ought to be a second connection. Whether this is the right location is to be determined, but this is an opportunity for us to try to set that up for that ultimate connection. And, and we think we might be able to get that. We, we do have the opportunity at Criswell. We have that pretty well.
That right of way.
Right of way set up for that. And we always thought there should be one here. Whether this is the perfect location, I think that's debatable. And it, it does have the byproduct that you mentioned, Bill, but I don't know that you'll get significant in, in, you know, heavy industrial use, just with that one as far west as it is. But we think the opportunity to obtain it is a, is a bright move for the future. Might not be the, exactly the way we want it, but it's better than not having it, I think, is the way we think about it.
Yeah, I could be mistaken, Mark, but I don't think they actually manufacture. I think they're just a distributor of fiberglass pools, so I think that should help as well. That you're not actually going to be having raw materials coming and going from the site. I think it's just a storage warehouse and an office for them.
Yeah. Contract, it'll be trucks for the contractor condos, not semi trucks, but probably, you know, F two-fifties, F three-fifties with trailers.
Greg.
I had the same problem.
Oh, wow.
Great minds work alike.
Lisa, do you have anything on this one?
Can't you, can't you, can't you, at some point when we get this road through, can we restrict traffic within ordinance on Valley to a certain weight?
We might be able to do that.
You could load limit, you could load limit. We're, you know, we're talking about that right now with, as, as we're, as we're working our way through Criswell, that you would load limit Criswell and push that, those trucks up on, on Crow Creek. Because that's a fully drainable-based twelve-inch street until we get Criswell to a place to be built like that. So you could load limit this. That might be a way to, to do that.
Yeah, that's just not, not a good spot for.
But clearly, this would be to our advantage long-term for vehicular traffic, more pedestrian, I mean, more cars and buses and vans to be able to go between Valley and, and US sixty-seven. But, but that is the short, short-term problem with this.
Yep. Back to Bill. How is the concrete overlay holding up?
Here, here. It seems like in the last eighteen months or so, we've had a few blowups that we've had to patch. Whether we're going to get another fifteen, twenty years out of it, that's probably debatable. But I, I don't know what the original lifespan, I'd have to dig out and see what, I know it varied quite a bit in thickness. So I think those thinner areas are probably the ones that we're seeing starting to have some blowups.
It's a lot of use with concrete trucks, doesn't it?
Yes.
Unfortunately.
Yep.
The blowups that we have had, we've just, I've had my staff go in and do full-depth eight, nine-inch that concrete patches in those sections. Just in those blowup areas, and they just seem to be areas where they were, had a lot of groundwater underneath that pavement because it doesn't have a drainable base.
That's probably fifteen years old, Bill.
Oh, the white topping?
Yeah, I think you're probably in that range, yeah.
And I think it was fifteen to twenty when it was, when it was laid down.
An asphalt overlay is twenty that you hope to get, you know, being concrete, maybe twenty-five at the most, probably, since it wasn't as thick. Yep. Thank you.
Any other questions here on N? And I'd like to entertain a motion that it remain on consent for tomorrow night?
So moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? We'll take it up tomorrow. Let's go to our last one for you, Mark. Oh.
Thirty-four oh three Overland Drive. This is just an update. Really, we just have a contract for your approval for demolition of this property. It is not a city-owned property. This is a private residence that's been abandoned for some time now. And we spent a lot of time talking to you about different things in, in three-on-three sessions, and we just did some, an ordinance change. So I just kind of want to give you some perspective on what we did here. So here's a little timeline. You'll see some pictures of, of the property in question. We get a lot of calls on it. I think you all get a lot of calls on it. Hopefully, this activity will cease with, with the demolition. So this property, we were able to get a search warrant to enter the property on July ninth of twenty-twenty-one. We were assisted by Bettendorf PD, Bettendorf Fire Department to actually access the property. You'll see it's quite, quite a mess. We've got a bad roof, we've got animal infestation. That's why things are all strewn about. And then you also have an abandoned pool in the backyard, causing some concern for neighborhood children and whatnot. We did get a demo agreement and provided to the owner on June twenty-eighth of twenty-twenty-two. They declined our initial agreement. That led to some help from City Councilor Chris Curran. On October fourth, twenty-twenty-two, we approved the use of Iowa statute sixty-seven A to pursue this case. That lets us bring these cases directly to District Court, so we don't have to go to magistrate court. Chris did a ton of work to get that ordinance drafted. It gave our previous demo agreement a lot of teeth because now we had something to say. If you don't take our agreement, we have a way to pursue you in District Court rather quickly, as opposed to going through magistrate court and all, all the hoops that we have to jump through there. Thirteen days later, the owner, after we passed our, our sixty-seven A ordinance, the owner signed the demo agreement. So I think that things, those two things are related, and I really appreciate council support in doing that. Also, I can't say enough how much Chris Curran wrecks right now our staff in code enforcement did to get us to this point. So really, the contract is just a chance for me to give you an update. We did sole source the contract because we were able to, to piggyback on our flood buyout demo. So we bid that, and then this came in just a few days later, and we were able to just piggyback on that. So it is a sole source, but we do have a current bid, and it's within a very reasonable cost, I'll be honest with you. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions, Greg?
Comment? I've got a hundred calls on this thing, and I want to thank you and your staff and the city attorney and everybody for their work on this because it, this needed to go. It was, there's two little children live next door and safety issue. So thank you all.
Thanks, yeah.
Lisa, go ahead.
Okay, we're paying for the demolition, right?
We are.
Okay, and this property's remaining in his hands?
It will, but we'll have a lien and will be made whole upon sale of the property. Thanks for allowing me to clarify that. Should have said that earlier.
Okay, so then we'll be reimbursed for the demo?
Yeah, once the property sells.
Okay.
That lien would be satisfied.
See, I was going to say, he set up, it's, property's cleared and he can rebuild a new house, and we did him a great service, so just down the road if he sells it, okay.
Existing, existing liens of several thousand dollars already, just for the mowing and shoveling that we've had to do of the sidewalks.
Just looks like it needs a little elbow grease, eh?
You need C four.
Looks like, looks like your apartment in college, Your Honor.
That's what I was telling you. Except the mold. That looks like a heck of a Friday night. Other questions?
Your Honor, Mark, Mark is being modest. He has been.
I think he started the presentation patting himself on the back for using the colors.
He's been, he's been zealously in pursuit of this property, and he's engaged all of us and, and he's done a great job to get us to this point, and lots of people helped, but Mark's been the, the driving force. And we're, I'm hoping that when you approve this tomorrow, that we might have somebody there with a backhoe on Wednesday.
It could be done.
Well, the good news is, there's a few more out there. Now that whatever you've learned from this procedure, you can go to the next one.
I think, Mayor, that, that really is a good point, all jokes aside, that we were able to use city attorney's expertise to identify the state statute. But now we have a playbook. We, I think we will use this judiciously. This is not something we want to do very often, but there are a few cases that I think it is appropriate, and now we know the steps to do that, and we can pursue those.
Perfect. Just keep our first string quarterbacks playing. Got a lot of bad things going on. Jerry and then Frank.
Thank you, Your Honor. I, I would like to also say thank you very much. You know, this isn't my award, but I think this is a good precedent and, and it, it shows that our code enforcement people are doing a good job. I do have a question about demolition here. The demolition will not demolish the sidewalk, correct? The sidewalk will, the sidewalk will retain, be retained.
Right.
And then, of course, we will have the problem with snow removal on this and, and, and mowing the whole yard.
Right.
After it's done, because he probably won't mow it.
I think they're going to demo the sidewalks too, Jerry.
Well, that's about it. I don't, I don't want the sidewalk demoed.
All jokes aside, we may have to cut the sidewalk to cap, to cap some utilities. They'll come back in warm weather and put appropriate sidewalk back if they have to do that.
Because it, because it is a neighborhood and, and you know, you, it is in a neighborhood and expectation is that the neighborhood kids, you know, ride their bike up and down it, that the.
For sure.
And we will continue to, if we are responsible, because he doesn't take care of it, we'll continue to do it. We'll continue to lien the property and to the point, when we talked earlier with Lisa's question, whoever buys this property ultimately is going to have to pay all those liens for the sale. So the sooner this thing gets demolished, the better off he is to try to sell it, because he's not going to sell it in this condition. So hopefully, somebody responsible buys it, and we don't have any more issues here.
And to Greg's point, the neighbors want this down. They'll be okay if the sidewalk goes away for a couple of months.
Frank? Thank you, Your Honor. Mark, just before we leave this, since we're talking about this, could you give us an update on how successful we've been with the Maple Crest property? Is this contractor working now? Is this going to take care of the problem, or is he going to be in there for a short period of time and then back out like they have in the past?
It's a very skilled contractor. I, they're capable of doing the work. You know, they're going to want payment to do it, so I, I assume as long as they're getting paid, they'll continue to do the work. Yeah, different property we're talking about here in different part of town, but actually not that far away. But yeah, the restoration company that's working there is, is very qualified to do the work, and they're under contract to do it. They pulled all the appropriate permits. They're, they're, you know, straight shooters. We don't expect any problems.
I think the roof is going on as we speak.
It was.
Good.
Good job, sir.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, nice job, team. We appreciate you. Let's keep agenda O on consent tomorrow night by vote, please.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we'll take it up on consent. Let's take a look at the rest of the consent agenda before we get into the rest of our business this evening, and then we'll go to your presentation on the other two items. Anything else on consent that any particular council person would like to address at this time? I have a question. What is a Metrom tactic ID hyphen N plus handheld spectrum, spectrometer?
That'd be me, sir.
Does that, does that make me look stupid? But I don't know what a spectrometer is. It does worry me about trips to, you know, the hospital for certain procedures, but oh, it's, it's in your.
It's, it's mine.
Oh, my God, all right. This is good. Tell me about this.
You're not going to like this, Your Honor.
So one of the issues is with the amount of drugs and narcotics that our officers are dealing with on the streets and with fentanyl, as, as you know, just exposure to some of these substances can be very dangerous. Lieutenant Andrew Champion wrote a grant for the SCRA, which we, we did receive to pay for this. And what this device is, is it's something that all our officers can use when we bring in narcotics, where we don't have to be taking things out of packages, taking samples, exposing ourselves to danger. And actually, it's something that can be used with packages that aren't opened to be able to not only identify what the substances are, but be able to do it in a safe manner. So this is, this is a great piece of technology that we want to utilize to keep our officers safe. And it also will be able to more accurately identify the substances we're dealing with for court purposes. So it's a, it's. it's pretty neat. From the time he asked for the grant, he did a little bit of negotiating and boy, wouldn't you know, they came down in price a little bit. So the original grant, I believe, was for about thirty-three thousand and and the final cost for this is, there's two main devices out there and we like this one. So I believe it's like twenty-six thousand.
Twenty-six, seven, twelve in our package.
Oh, that's what our request is. Yeah, and the grant is actually for more than that. So it's gonna be a hundred percent covered by the grant. It won't be any cost to the city and it's gonna be a really nice tool for our officers to have.
Fantastic. Any other questions on any other consent item? Yes, Frank. I'm sorry, Jerry.
Thank you, Your Honor.
I saw your hand. I looked over. I said, Frank, that's on me.
That's okay. Item G, I noticed that we are not requiring any stormwater changes up there. At the same time, they paved a whole section of lawn out there and now we have impervious surface. And doesn't all this grain across into the golf course or?
No, there is already stormwater retention that was built with the dentist's office to cover both lots.
Oh, okay. So there is...
It's actually north of there, just south of the creek. You can't, I see it from the road, but it is there. There's a second pond.
Ah, okay. Thank you.
Anything else on consent? All right, then I'd entertain a motion to allow all items on consent to remain there for tomorrow night.
Second.
All those in favor? Any opposed? We'll take up all consent agenda items as written. Presentations will continue. Boy, we're learning a lot tonight.
Thank you, Your Honor. You have a memo from myself and Chris, mostly Chris, so.
On the Webster vacancy?
Correct.
All right.
Because Alderman Scott Webster has submitted his resignation because of his new position with the Iowa State Senate, we have a vacancy that'll be effective on December thirty-first. And we need to make a decision of how to fill that vacancy. Your choices are by appointment or by special election. Chris can go through both of the options with you. Then we expected some discussion of how you wish to proceed. And if we can come to a conclusion this evening to give us direction, we've outlined what we think are the timelines under which that would occur. If that decision doesn't want to be directed to us tomorrow night, we think we should make that for sure at the next meeting. If we choose to fill that vacancy as soon as possible, we've added the opportunity for tomorrow's agenda to make that happen. But we're trying to, I think, take applications that would be accepted through January sixth. If you do this by appointment, we would then deliver them for your review. We'd make presentations at the meeting January sixteenth and then we would suggest a special meeting be called the week of January twenty-third, likely the twenty-fourth, just based on our internal calendars, for you to decide on the final appointment. But if you choose to call for a special election, that calls for such election to take place as soon as possible. And in our conversations with the auditor, she says that most likely that would take place on March seventh and a special election would cost us between eight and ten thousand dollars. This position would be up for election again in November.
We can lean Scott's money from the state to pay for that, right? See, now you gotta break in the action. You gotta go back.
Sorry, Your Honor, sorry. I was a little slower than usual. I think I caught Jerry's call. So with that, maybe Chris wants to jump in and fill in any holes that I missed?
I think you got the main points. I think the one, the one thing I'd just like to clarify, it's obviously in the memo. I tried to make it pretty specific, but of the two choices, if you do go with the, if you do decide to go for an appointment, there is the possibility that a special election would be required anyway. If we get fifteen percent of valid signatures, so people that live in the fifth ward, fifteen percent of the last, the number of voters from the last time the fifth ward was up. So we would need sixty-one valid signatures from that ward. And if that takes place, then there would be a special election anyway. There are certain timing issues in terms of when that would take place and would be dependent upon when the appointment was made or when the notice of intent to appoint is made. So that date, we don't know at this point, but that, there is that possibility. So I just wanted to make that clear that an election may take place even if you decide to go the appointment route. So.
And we have historically, Your Honor, done both. So there's no right or wrong answer here. It's just the council's decision and the council's vote to proceed.
My only concern is the timeframe between when you think you would request that the potential applicants return their packets January sixth and a decision time. In the past, the council was involved in doing some interviews of some attractive candidates. I don't know that we'll get that done in the ten-day period unless we all block off some time now. It's possible to do maybe some subset of the city council that might do that. Then we appoint people to go and then come back and provide you input. That would be fine. I just worry about that. What's that, from the sixth to the sixteenth? It's pretty tight.
I would say, Your Honor, the issue of how to make the appointment is really up to the council. There's no, there's nothing in the state code that specifies or dictates the type of process. There was a process in the past, as I understand it, where there would be sort of a give-and-take interview.
Yeah, we may want to tweak some of that.
And so what we had put in the, as one of the potential actions for tonight is to really have an opportunity for the potential appointees to provide a statement, but not really a question and answer at a special session, but and then to have the actual decision made at a subsequent meeting. But again, it's up to the council if you go that route on how to structure it.
And I'm partially to blame for the timetable that we set out. I thought if we were gonna do an appointment, it would be advantageous to have someone on board as we start the budget process. And we would be giving our budget presentation likely on Monday, February sixth, I think, is, if I remember my calendar right, Jason, and our main work session on February eleventh. Otherwise, if, and I'm not, there's no right or wrong. If that's not anything the council is concerned about, you know, the dates to your point, or really to what Chris said, to your choosing as to how you want this to occur.
I think really for tonight, you're trying to have a discussion about the concept of appointment versus
Correct.
having an election.
That's correct.
Okay. Anybody want to weigh in on that? I'll start with Greg and maybe we'll just go all the way through. Greg, what are your thoughts?
Thank you, Your Honor. Well, I, my political leanings are election because it's Fifth Ward's representative and they should have a voice in it. But then I'm also, we're all responsible for the fiscal well-being of the of the city as well. And it's eight or ten thousand dollars and then they're gonna have to run again in just a few months anyway. So I'm kind of torn, but I think I'm leaning more toward an appointment because the people in Fifth Ward can still get sixty-one signatures and still have a and still have an election if that's what they choose. If they're okay with us making an appointment for a few months and then having an election, then that's, that's fine too. So I think right now to save the money and there's a way for them to to override that decision and I'm comfortable with that. That's kind of where I sit tonight.
Thank you, sir. Scott?
Thank you, Your Honor. I agree with Greg that if we thought that the voice of the people would truly be heard, like are they interested in, would they show up? Because historically with special elections, I think with Bill's election in the morning, it was like one point six percent of eligible voters showed up and maybe in the afternoon, as much as three to four percent for a total of maybe five percent. That's not a large number of people. We don't, I don't think, have a strong bench in the city of Bettendorf of people that are willing to step up and serve in city government. And sadly, I think Bill had to raise nearly four thousand dollars to run and was maybe motivated to run. But I don't, I'm not confident that we've got people out there that would step up and serve, let alone try to fundraise and get a competent campaign put together on this short notice. So no disrespect to the financial argument, I think what in the big picture here, what we need is people that are willing to serve in local government. How do we encourage people to get involved? And obviously, we're talking about the difference between eleven months and nine months of service and that the voice of the people would be heard more likely when you're up for election and we've got some other folks that are running where they're, they would actually have a more authentic voice. So I think we ought to turn our sights on to how we encourage people to get involved on our boards and commissions and to see themselves as the type of person that would serve on city council. And if we get six or eight applications or, you know, throw the number out, I don't, I don't know that it matters. But if we can't, if we don't have a clear, if we don't, if we don't have a clear winner, a clear candidate that we think would be a great representative to the city council, we can always go to an election and pivot to that. And I think with, with Bill's case, with Don Wells and Luton, and I can't remember the other gentleman's name, Franks or something like that, Franz, it wasn't clear. I mean, that would have been some hard feelings, I think. So for my seat, I'd like to recruit people to put their hat in the ring and see what we can do and presumably through the course of interviewing, do an appointment.
Lisa, we're gonna go to you since Scott's sitting in your seat.
I agree absolutely with Scott. So he said, said it all.
Bill?
Thank you, Your Honor. When Scott Webster initially ran for Fifth Ward Alderman, he worked hard. He went door-to-door. He talked to people. He listened to their concerns. And it got him elected. I really think the people of the Fifth Ward, the residents of the Fifth Ward, should pick who should be the representative. It's, I think that's, that's the way it's initially set up. You know, maybe a lot of people didn't vote when I first ran, but it's almost tradition anymore that in Bettendorf, if you are a seated council member, a lot of us run unopposed. So I don't think you're gonna see, if we appoint somebody, that there's gonna be a great interest in wanting to do something else in November. So I vote for the voice of the people.
Thank you, sir. Jerry?
Thank you, Your Honor. I guess my concern is that for a new board member, a new council member, to be very effective, they need to be on board for the budget process. And while I agree with the concept of the voters having an input, we are not totally locking them out. If there are a significant number of voters that have concern, we're gonna have this on the council agenda in, you know, in the next couple of weeks, they can show up. And therefore, I guess I would like to say that my initial assessment is go for an appointment. And like Scott said, we can always go to Plan B and go to an election if that doesn't work out.
Thank you, sir. Frank?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'm in support of an appointment and I think one of the biggest reasons is I'm one that was appointed when I originally came on the park board and then ran for council. This person that's going, if they're appointed, is going to be a short-term situation and then they're gonna have to run again. So they're gonna have to run two times. And when you were talking about the dollars and cents, Scott, I think that's a lot to ask of any individual personally. So I would support the appointment and that's it.
Thank you, sir.
Your Honor, can I add something? Frank's got a good point as far as, you know, the money part. I mean, it costs a lot to run, but you know, people that are gonna put in for an appointment, they're looking at this seriously. They're looking at their time and stuff. So you know, they're looking at this seriously. I know Bill made the comment of a lot of times we don't have opponents, but I think there's a general consensus that people in Bettendorf are happy with the government. You see how many don't show up for our meetings. So, I mean, I think there's a reason for that, but I think the people that are gonna put in for the appointment have seriously thought about this. So I don't think that's gonna be a bad thing. And then to Greg and everybody else's point, if they aren't happy, you know, they can go get that petition for a special election. So just wanted to add that.
So are we comfortable putting on tomorrow night's agenda a vote on this issue? Are there questions that you have that you would rather have answered tonight? So it sounds like we'd like to have a resolution directing staff to publish notice of the council vacancy and request applications and resumes for potential appointment, understanding that may not be voted on positively tomorrow night and anybody could make the motion or resolution to fill the vacancy by a special election. So if that goes down tomorrow night, obviously, we're doing a special election. Do we have, anybody have an issue with putting it on tomorrow night's agenda? You need more time to, you can all talk to each other, obviously, and ask any questions of Chris?
I'd make that motion, Your Honor, if you're entertaining it.
Yes, please. Second. All right. There's a motion of second to direct staff to put on tomorrow night's agenda the request that we publish notice for a council vacancy and request for applications for resumes for potential appointments. Is there any discussion on this item?
Bob, can I add another thing? I know I keep piping in. I know when I did my questionnaire, there was a question as far as would I be, would I be willing to run or am I planning on running or something because it was gonna be a short-term appointment? I think that's something that needs to be included because that's something critical as far as, you know, are they applying because it's an appointment and it's a easy thing versus running, you know? So that, that's a question, just FYI, Deckard, to put that in on the questionnaire. So.
Any more advice for what we should be doing? We can certainly do. We can do that tomorrow night. We can get through the vote and see what happens. All those in favor of directing staff to do that, add it to tomorrow night's agenda in the way I've described, signify by aye. Any opposed? I will take it up tomorrow. Bill's a nay.
Somebody's gonna win the election six to one, it looks like.
Your Honor, this, this isn't locking us into the procedure for appointment because I don't, I don't really agree with the subcommittee.
No, there's no procedure. This is just, and if, I'm just trying to find ways to better what we did last time. But we'll take that input. Let's see what happens tomorrow night and then let's figure out how we're gonna do it. We'll have, until we get the resumes back, to know what even step two might be. We're going to ask for the resumes and we're going to put together a questionnaire. So if you have information on questionnaires, that we could do first.
We will examine, Your Honor, questions and field some questions to you and take questions or suggestions of interview-type questions. So this just, this just starts the process and makes us publish a notice.
Okay. We have been at it for an hour and a half. Let's take a ten-minute break?
Ten minutes would be great.
Ten-minute break and allow our folks to talk, to get ready to talk about the CIP. There is some food if you're interested. Thank you. We took a ten-minute break, grabbed a little something to eat, hit the restrooms and we're back for our CIP review. And for this, we welcome our city administrator, Deckard Plain, finance director, Jason Chat, public works director, Brian Schmidt, community development director, Mark Hunt, and the rest of you who all put in your requests.
And, Your Honor, Brent Morlock, our city engineer, is sitting at the table with Jason as he's kind of the major architect of...
He's telling us how much it all costs.
That's right. So we gave you the CIP a week or so ago, maybe ten days ago in its draft form. It's still in its draft form, but we're hoping that its draft form. It's still in, in its draft form, but we're hoping to take you through more of a global discussion and do not intend to go line by line through this tonight. I think we want to hit the, what we think are the highlights. We are, a lot of projects are coming together in a perfect storm, particularly out at Forest Grove and Middle, relative to all of the development and the roundabouts, and the Forest Grove improvements to the street system, sidewalks, trails, all of that sort of thing, which is a pretty magnanimous undertaking. And so, we want to, I think, look at this from a strong macro level. You can see that the, the bonding issuance as proposed in '23 is pretty strong, because all those things have come together. And Brent and Jason will take you through that. What I do want to point out to you is, under this proposal, and the movement of everything that's in place, the debt levy necessary to carry this would stay the same at $4.85. And you can see that the debt limit relative to our debt margin still is falling pursuant the direction you gave us over the last four or five years. And as I mentioned, I think in one of our discussions, when I first became city administrator 32 years ago, we were at roughly a 50% debt capacity, or debt margin ratio. And this gets us really close to that mark, and in the fifth year moves us down below that quite substantially. And it, it would be almost impossible to try to do this with cash. You could not do it without bonding, to keep all of these projects alive and do all the things that you want us to do. So, we're gonna go over it kind of by program, and I'm gonna turn it over to Jason and to Brent, who've done the bulk of the work to get us here. And then we'll take questions relative to any specific questions you might have on the individual projects and the, in the program. So, Jason?
Thank you, Decker.
As you get there, Jason, you'll know my question will be, because it's every year, because the debt limit portion used is going down, but we also now are using sewer bonds, yes, R F bonds, rather, rather than a GO bond issuance, which of course doesn't count towards that. So, you're still spending more money. It just pulls it in a different way. So, as you get to that part, help me through that again with what percentages you think it would be based on... Thank you.
No problem.
How much, how much was the over and under on that question?
We knew it was coming, that's why I just...
I have a better answer for you this year. So, no, Decker, absolutely right. Brent and his team and, and all the folks on staff and I have probably bounced this CIP back and forth more than in any previous year, as, as long as I've been in this seat, just in this environment of, of rising construction costs. And now we'll couple that with rising interest costs. But I would just start off by saying that, as I say often, this CIP is a, is very much a living document. The, the CIP plan you have in your hands is by no means final, because things are constantly evolving in this world. So, the action that we'll be asking you to take over the next couple of council cycles relative to the bonds is just that. It is relative to the bonds. It's not necessarily an approval of this line item CIP, which we'll, we'll talk in more detail about throughout the budget process. But you will begin with that, those proceedings tomorrow night by just setting a public hearing on the issuance of, and it reads up to 13.5 million. We only need 13 million in the project fund. At the advice of bond council, we always add a little bit of cushion to that number just in case the bonds would, for some reason, sell at a discount, which I have never seen. Most of our bonds sell at a premium. But in the case of a discount sale, we would need to borrow 13 and a half to get 13. That's never happened, and we don't anticipate that to happen. But at the advice of our bond council, we always add that cushion there just in case we would need that. So, that said, on this CIP summary page in front of you, the first, I would say, three quarters of rows are, are very much just a summary of the line item CIP, which makes up the bulk of the packet behind this page. So, you can see it's kind of broken down by program as we move down the page, and then all five years, really six years of, of fiscal year work is shown here. And as Decker said, this is very much front-loaded because of all of the projects happening out at Forest Grove and Middle, and a few other big projects throughout town. So, you see the, the actual expenditures here in FY '23 at 18.2 million, almost 13 million in FY '24, but we're easing that back, 11 and a half in '25, down to 8.8 in '26.
You see an increase in the sidewalk, and in the alley, and in the patching programs for this year as well.
And that's...
We always talk about, hey, do we just put these placeholders there for a reason, or do we actually need it? Is this the year where instead of 18.6, you pull that million and a half out?
What you're seeing there in, in FY '23 is delays from '22 that we've carried forward. So, while we're, and we're bonding for 13 million, we're spending 18. So, about $5 million worth of projects is delayed from last year, just hadn't taken place. So, now we got to amend the budget in the new year, FY '23, because we're, and I say this often, we kind of shoehorn a construction year budget into two fiscal years.
Right.
It does, it's, there's not always a clean break at June 30. So, that's the effect, is we've, we've carried over some, some costs from last year to the new year.
To answer your question, Your Honor, there, there are gonna be a few programs that, that we are gonna be able to phase out. I think specifically within the, the five-year, the alley program for one. If construction costs had not increased the way they had, we were projecting to be done with all of our asphalt alleys in year three. We're gonna most likely push out to year five, maybe year six, depending on what kind of inflationary numbers we continue to see. But then that, that item drops completely off. Then, we have that discussion of, do we move that money to your local streets? Are, are we spending enough? Are we not spending enough? And, you know, I think we just got brand-new pavement management data. Took a while to get back from the state. Streets were driven in late '21, they, they processed that for months. And actually, with our new GIS specialist that's come on board here in the last couple of weeks, I would expect during the budget presentation that we'll be giving you an update on the condition of our streets and how that is relative to what those silos are showing. Do we continue to show a million here, a million here, 500 here, or do we need to reduce or change what that ratio is?
Okay.
The bottom quarter of the page in front of you, with the colored rows, I want to just kind of touch on quickly. You see there the first gold bar, yellow bar, the GO bond issue necessary to support the projects above. And we talked about the 13 million this year. We think 11 million will do it next year, 10 million the following, and then 8 and a half million going forward. So, you see the average of those six issuances is just under 10 million, which is kind of a, a good target, I think, where we like to be. The blue row, sewer SRF issue. So, this is a new maneuver for us. Your Honor, you pointed out the use of revenue bonds in the sewer fund, and we actually got away from that last year and sold GO bonds in the sewer fund. SRF is actually even a little bit more advantageous to us. It's the state revolving fund loan. So, right now, the interest rate there is 2% over 20 years, with a quarter percent annual fee. That is considered GO debt. So, it's, it's included in that debt limit.
But it's also at a rate that you want to take advantage of.
Right.
So, put everything in that bucket.
Yep.
As much as you can.
So, Brent and I actually have a meeting with our friends at McClure later this week. They're gonna help us work through that first SRF loan.
Yeah. Everything, starting with your project development, so your planning and design, your engineering fees basically, are eligible for SRF. So, we're gonna be pushing forward, most likely next month, with an initial planning and design loan to finish up the engineering that's needed for the Spencer Creek lift station. We've had some changes in the landscape out there. We may have some alternatives that we want to look at. So, there's a little bit of final engineering that needs to be done. That'll be our first test case of going through the SRF process.
And I think, you noticed there, those are some pretty large numbers in that blue row, larger than what we've typically issued in the sewer fund. But they should look familiar to you from the sewer rate study that we had completed last spring. These are the, the issuances we need to complete Spencer Creek and to complete the I and I projects identified by McClure. We have flip-flopped. In the details, you'll notice, when we had last spoken, we were gonna do I and I first and Spencer Creek in the latter half of the CIP. With the development of the I-8 interchange project going forward, we flip-flopped those to bring Spencer Creek up to the earlier years, and the I and I projects are now in the outer years, just to take advantage of getting that work done at the same time that the interchange is done.
Yeah. We're, we're also gonna, if you'll remember, for years, we've been talking about that little lift station that exists on the north side of AD, and the force main that exists under as a way to serve something. If it came right, we can handle that. Well, unfortunately, that force main, of course, falls directly in the abutment for the new interchange. So, it has to be removed, and we'd be laying out dead money to realign that down the off-ramps and completely outside the footprint of the interchange. We thought it made a lot more sense at this point, especially with the rising construction costs. We need to get that pipe under AD and get that station built.
We, we thought that there might be an opportunity with the DOT when they do the, the engineer, when they do the actual construction, that we might be able to get an open cut. But it doesn't appear that it's close enough for us to get that. So, we'll still have to do a bore. But, but we can go in probably under their construction timeframe. It might make it a little less...
Yeah, especially if there are other utilities that may need to be relocated for other people as part of the project.
Right.
Are we confident that, that low SRF rate is gonna continue, or do we think that the governor is gonna change that?
We have no indication that they're gonna change it. It's been that way for the last, I think, 20 years, when the program started. It's 1% for a 10-year loan, 2% for a 20-year loan, and it's been that way. And I believe there are...
There's 30-year loans for the treatment plants, if that's specific to that.
Right. No indication that it's gonna change.
It's a huge success across the state, and it's very necessary. So, I don't expect...
It's actually a huge success across the country.
Yeah.
In the next row down, it's, it's a white row, stormwater GO issue. Here again, I, I think I would recommend we go the GO route. No debt necessary in stormwater this year. I do think we'll need about $2.2 million next year just to keep up with the projects that we, that keep kind of cropping up in that area. But hopefully, no more debt after that, as the CIP is constructed today. If we add in detention ponds and detention basins...
Stabilization.
Stabilization, that, that may, that may change. But as it's, as it's planned today, no further debt after next year would be needed there. And then, I'll just reiterate what Decker had already pointed out. The orange row, debt levy necessary, 4.85. You'll remember, we reduced this from $5 here in the current year's budget to 4.85. So, one of the constraints that we tried to work with was keeping that debt levy the same. And then, the debt limit used, as, as Decker's already pointed out. So, we have constructed the CIP and, and really the debt plan around two constraints. The debt levy necessary, which we wanted to at least present to you at 4.85, and obviously, you have the, the authority to increase that if you would like. And then, secondly, the cash flow in the CIP fund, which is on...
And, and just by way, you always hear us talk about what a nickel is worth in the operating levy and what a nickel is worth in the capital. So, if, in the capital side, you were to raise the levy a nickel, that's roughly $1 million. On the operating side, it's roughly $100,000. Because you, there, it's a one-time deal in the issuance of the bonds, and in, in the operating levy, it's a continuous expenditure. So, just want to make sure you get the distinction. Because I know somebody's gonna say, wait a minute, you told us $100,000, now you're telling us a million. On the debt side, it's worth a million. On the operating side, it's worth about $100,000.
Exactly right.
Question. Back to the waters, I'm sorry, stormwater issues. We had, when we had those problems with Stafford Creek and losing the, in court and all that sort of stuff, we, kind of our alternative was to try to do retention stuff. And is that, is that, is that where that's funded?
There's a few projects, a few larger ones. We're struggling to find extra detention on Stafford, unfortunately, because it's fully built out.
Sure.
Everything upstream.
No, I'm just talking about the whole program.
Exactly. That would be built out of that program.
Okay, so, is that going...
Haley Heights project that we've talked about, the basin for the property that we bought.
Yeah.
Haley Heights, White Post detention.
Yeah.
And then, any stream bank stabilization programs would be paid for out of that. There are some placeholders.
But it's at zero, though. I mean, is that, like, I guess my question, is that going, that program going away?
No, that is just no bond issuance.
Okay.
They're able to support both operations and the projects just through the fee.
Thank you.
Yeah. And actually, I should touch on, before we move on, moving back to the sanitary sewer fee. We'll propose another 4% increase for April of '23. We've been doing 4% for several years. Then, beginning in April '24, we would recommend instituting the findings from the rate study. And you'll remember those, that called for increases of about 5.65%. I don't know that it'll be 5.65% every year. It might be 5.55 one year and 5.75 another, but right in that neighborhood. And that, that is to service these large debt issuances in that blue row. Like I said, those are larger than what we've done. But once we get past this Spencer Creek project and past the I and I projects, I would anticipate we're probably back down to a normal sewer project level.
Yeah, more inflationary.
In the stormwater area, to your point, Alderman, Adamson, the projects are supported through the fee with, obviously, much less debt issued. But as planned, those fee increases could be decreased. We've been doing 20 cents annually for several years. I think there's an opportunity in the out years that that could drop to 10 cents, 5 cents. And then, I've, I've always kind of targeted that $6 per ERU as kind of a, maybe a, a tipping point in that fund. And we're still on track to see that happen. If we were to get to $6, I think the fund sustains itself, as the CIP is constituted today. I'm always gonna add that caveat.
And for those of you with very long memories, when we started that program in the stormwater program, I recommended that we do $5 per ERU. That was, I believe, 22 years ago, I think somewhere in there. And the council didn't like that number and made it $2.50. So, over those 20 years, we've gotten to the $5 rate, and we're working our way now towards $6. I want, I don't want to say I was a visionary, but I believe I was. Had we done that then, we probably, I want to say we'd be retired with those issues. But we would have retired a lot of issues by then. But it's, it's a number that we recommended a long time ago, and we're just barely there now.
So, you have to hit a happy medium with what you recommend, what the public will accept.
I understand. Politically, exactly. I understand that, Bill.
What's your new recommendation?
Work your way to $6.
Hold on.
Thank you for even asking the question.
So, before I leave this page, I'll just point out a few things in the, we have quiet zones funded. We have the arterial collector plan funded.
Are we going after that federal money for the quiet zones? Do we make application by December 1?
You separate grant programs.
No, we did not, Your Honor.
Not, not this year. We weren't in a position to have a full report and approval. We did, actually, Decker came out and met with them. We had the FRA, along with our consultant, that were down. That was a mandatory step in the checklist, to go and walk all the, the intersections, or all the crossings, and evaluate what they suggested versus what FRA may see. And they were in full agreements with us. And now it's, what is the, the next step is really the funding. And there are some other grant programs.
There are plenty of, yeah.
We just need to...
Yeah, the, the, the program that you saw the Dan Port just applied for is not one that we were moving towards. So, it'll be good to see what happens to them in that application. We were looking at more of the FRA grant, not, not... We were looking at more of the FRA grant, not, not.
The USDOT, like consolidated.
So there's perfect opportunities here in both ways and.
From CP, foundation.
And so the quiet zones, what we anticipated is if we were to get the three million dollar allotment. We would be able to use that from a cash flow perspective. And we would not be able to spend those dollars right away. And I think our numbers, if I'm correct, Brent, were like, we estimate about one point six million, one point seven million. In actual construction of those six zones. So we've spaced it out because there's no way we're going to be able to build all six at one time. And we've spaced it out over the CIP. We'd be able to use the three million upfront if it's approved from a cash flow perspective for other things. And balancing this in through the CIP.
Okay. So as I said, we have a couple of constraints while we're kind of planning the debt plan and building the CIP as a whole. One being that debt levy and the second being the cash flow in the CIP fund to sustain the fund. And this gets back to kind of that shoehorning a construction year into a, over a couple fiscal years theme. If you look at the bottom of page two, this yellow row, this is the ending cash balance at June thirtieth in the CIP fund. My goal here is to have that ending balance be about half of what I expect to spend in the next fiscal year. Because June thirtieth is smack in the middle of the construction season. So I know I've got a whole half a season to pay for before we're going to issue bonds again. So just to kind of, you know, pull back the curtain a little bit on how we come up with these debt and bond numbers, bond issuance numbers. I'm shooting to have that, that yellow column get me through half a year of construction is the idea. And then the other constraint being the tax levy, the four eighty-five debt levy in our debt service fund. This is an analysis of that fund over the next six years really, including this year. And you'll see the tax levy at four eighty-five, some very modest increases in taxable value. I tend to be conservative in my estimates of value because I don't want to get us stuck in these outer years. But you'll see the ending fund balance in the debt fund dips pretty heavily, but this is what this fund is for. It doesn't need to have a huge fund balance in it and begins to rebuild thereafter the third or fourth year. So those are the constraints that we had to work around. And then finally, this is the calculation of the debt margin. And you can see in this last kind of tan brown row. Those percentages moving from the fifty-two percent range in the next couple of years down to forty-seven by the end of twenty-seven, twenty-eight. Which we've summarized on the first page. So with that, before I turn it over to Brent to really talk projects. In your packet, and you've seen this before, is the bond sale calendar here in blue. These are all of the actions that council will take. I've included the Moody's rating call in there the week of January second, twenty twenty-three. Just because I like to invite you to attend that if you'd like. It's kind of an interesting look at, at the process. And then in the green is the budget calendar. I think it's, it's all related, so I just wanted to share that again. But I will go back to, you want to start here?
Yeah, maybe we'll just go over from that initial summary, kind of the high level programs. And then if you've got specific project info, I think you guys all have been through this enough to understand how it's organized. First section, main item, I seventy-four. Really our only remaining commitment, we've got a little bit of work left to finish on the current urban park. Everything north of the railroad tracks. They've probably got that seventy-five, eighty, maybe eighty-five percent with the weather that they've had complete. There's going to be some plantings and landscape restoration that gets done early next year, but that's fairly well along. The only other remaining portion there then obviously is the letdown structure.
We don't do the letdown structure. What are some opportunities for that money?
So this actually, the way it's crafted, does not have the letdown structure in there. So you will see that, that, that's about a four to four and a half million dollar potential is what we're seeing. So right now that is not showing it. So what we've established with the DOT, they generally speaking have a ten percent threshold on their projects. If it comes in within ten percent of their estimate, they award, they go. So we had to talk to them knowing how significantly our costs have increased. So basically, we have the right to review all the bids if it comes in over their estimate. And then we'll have to bring that in for, for you to consider. My gut says that number keeps rising. I think we're all fairly nervous about that. I think they're targeting, originally it was a April letting. I think they might have to move that back a month or two. They're, I think, running into some review issues. So we probably won't know that for still quite a while, unfortunately.
They changed from January?
So originally it was February and then it's kept creeping. April might actually be the current one. I'd have to check with it back through the emails.
Okay.
But it's been pushed a couple times, but, but yes, as of right now, it is not shown in there. If the number does come in good, what we've talked about is the DOT has been very receptive to extending our repayment. As of right now, as you can see on the screen, Jason has it finished in FY twenty-four. We would have to kick that out several years, two, three, maybe even four, who knows, depending on the number, to finish out that repayment. So we would be hopeful that they would be amenable to that. As of right now, the agreement stands that we would pay everything off in FY twenty-five, any additional balance that hangs out there. So, you know, we'd be looking to push out for another couple of years. Still more to come on that one.
So what's the million for?
Existing obligations. So we managed to pay ahead and we've actually reduced what we've paid the last three years, I want to say, a little bit from what our agreement was. So we still have commitments for things, the projects that they're closing out, that we have to pay them back for. A good chunk of that is design of the letdown structure and then the urban park.
All right, so it's not just letdown structure?
It's not just letdown structure. I think we had about six hundred and seventy-five thousand, seven hundred thousand. Worth of cost for the current section of the urban park, so we're paying for that as well.
Thanks.
Quiet zones, I think we've, we've touched on, if nobody has any questions there. Bridge program, this is just our routine bridge maintenance. You know, we completed the Indiana Bridge over Spencer Creek last year. That was a big one. Our two probably worst bridges left in town right now are Middle Road over Duck Creek and Eighteenth Street over Duck Creek. Both of which are going to be a nightmare to rebuild, quite frankly, with all the traffic and detours. They're working their way up, there's a standardized rating system. Once you hit a certain threshold in that, you're eligible for funding through the state. They have what's called a city bridge program. That caps at a million dollars. Unfortunately, the Middle Road Bridge, for example, is probably closer to two or half or three million. Eighteenth Street's, I think, about a million, seven, maybe two million now. So for us to do some work in those, obviously much larger projects, and we're going to have to go out and find some additional funding. There is a lot of bridge funding, however, in the current bills, so hopefully we'll get a better handle on that.
Might be better to get it done on federal money.
As soon as we, as soon as we meet that threshold, I think, for the city bridge program, because we really hate to just give up that million that we're automatically eligible for. And we'll know that when we redo our ratings this coming year.
Okay.
And that might be, as we talked about, when we go to DC, that might be, there are additional transportation funds available. And I think we still qualify as a rural state.
Depends on what program.
Yeah, that's right.
Some we do, some we don't. If they throw in an urbanized area, we don't. If they don't have that requirement, we do. But the DOT, I think, is finally starting to figure out how to disperse this money and it'll be getting down to the MPOs and we'll be finding out a lot more in the next couple of months. Sidewalk program includes both, so if the numbers look a little different, that includes sidewalk and repairs to rec trails. So annually, there's been two hundred and fifty thousand sidewalks and fifty thousand in rec trails. The rec trail one is simply a placeholder for emergency repairs. Some years we've spent two thirds of that, some years we've spent very little. It really just depends on weather and the kind of year.
Why do we need four this year?
So that was a carryover from previous. What we added, we pulled from some other programs that came in under this fiscal year. There was a large section, a couple of larger sections of sidewalk that made sense since we were in geographic location that we wanted to get done.
Okay.
And remind us of the trail sections that got done. Are we now from Hell's Eye Park to Devil's Glen? Is that the next stage or is that done of the Duck Creek Trail?
Oh, so the resurfacing, we're done from everything west of Twenty-third Street. So now we need to consider looking at Twenty-third to the east. Which isn't in nearly as bad a shape as, as those two were. So that's currently not funded with anything there. We don't have any additional Duck Creek funding right now.
Okay.
Alley program, we did have to, yet again, we had some underruns on some other projects carried over from last year. That's why we were able to add an additional alley in this year, trying to leverage this year's dollars that was bid last year. And we're talking construction year versus fiscal year. So that's why that shows a little higher, but otherwise we'll stick with the four fifty. I think we've got about eighteen alley segments left. We've done forty-seven, I think so, forty-six, forty-seven. Highly successful program and really want to see that through to the end. Again, if prices come back down, we'll finish that sooner, but most likely we're going to carry out to those outer years. Resurfacing is actually a total of a million, so this only shows geo money. So we've been supplementing, or proposed to supplement resurfacing and patching programs specifically with road use dollars. So the resurfacing will stay at a million dollars, which is what we've had. Unfortunately, it's just not going nearly as far as it has been. You know, we're, we're at least one standard street that I would say on the range of four to six hundred feet, let's say. We're one less this year for sure, just because of the inflation costs and that could continue. We're hearing ten percent rise in concrete next year, not really sure on asphalt prices. So that, that million unfortunately is still not going nearly as far. You know, this year's resurfacing program, we did all of the Oakbrook neighborhood, north of, north of middle, just east of seventy-four. You can kind of picture that, you know, the cul-de-sac and the two turnarounds there, that ate up eighty percent of our budget this year. You know, I know a couple other ones that we've talked about, metal, metal circle and park lane circle, south of middle, that are absolutely in drastic need. That's pushing two million dollars at this point with the increases that we've seen. So I think maybe to the mayor's point of, you know, are we able to reduce some of those? I think probably on the arterial collector for sure, once we get through what we want to get done. But I think some of that money absolutely is going to have to get shifted into these locals because it's just not going nearly as far as we'd like to. Reconstruction program, so, I should say, the resurfacing program is local asphalt streets. So that's, that's what we're doing there. Some of it is true resurfacing. You're grinding off some of the existing surface, replacing it. We've got a lot of older, and we've eaten through a lot of these in the last couple of years, but a lot of older asphalt streets that are maybe four or five inches of asphalt on dirt. So the minute we try to strip that off, it completely fails. So it's kind of morphed into a bit of an asphalt reconstruction program. It just depends on the streets that we have for the year. Reconstruction program is our standard concrete local street reconstruction, so that will stay at a million as well. Patching program is actually being reduced a little bit for a couple of years because we do need some additional funding. And that's one that the need is always going to be there, but we can, we can tailor that a little bit to help our needs on some of these larger commitments that we have. So that does go down for a little bit and then comes back up in the, in the out years. Arterial collector is, is our monster. You know, that's, that's our biggest one. That is Forest Grove and Middle. So total, if you include both the Forest Grove and Middle, the various phases that we've had out there. You know, we've got three active contracts right now. We've got the federal aid contract, the phase three project. We've got the FG eighty, which is the sewer and storm sewer project related to the Kellner development and crats. And then we have the competition drive. So those two, everything east of middle, happy to say, is completely wrapped up. They are basically getting ready to pull equipment out. The road is done, all the sewer is done. That's, that's about a huge success. And that'll stay closed right now until we have the need to close middle and forest, which will be happening sooner than later. But right now, we're targeting a date after the holidays, want to get through, through the end of the year and then look at what Valley can do through the winter. The phase three stuff, the Valley Construction is doing, last concrete pour will be tomorrow morning. And then we're targeting next Monday to be able to reopen the Friendship Intersection, which is long overdue. We ran into a lot of complications with sewer and material availability and you name it, utility conflicts. But once we get through here, this was a, this was a very busy eight hundred foot or so. Like I said, with utilities, we had gas and electric and comms and you name it that we ran into. Their hope is they can keep working through the winter. Obviously won't be paving, but there's a lot of pipe work to do and you can do that in the winter. So the fact that we'll have that Friendship Intersection open and we've got the new competition. The plan will be sooner than later to shut Forest and Middle and that becomes your east-west detour.
Any, any of those unforeseen problems relative to the consultant that did the design work?
They were not. They were mid-am unfortunately not having accurate locations and depths for what they had. Actually, we've had a very successful set of plans so far.
Thanks. Brent, maybe we could, maybe at the next meeting, we could have an actual near map presentation of the detours and how that's going to work. So if you're northbound on middle, how you get to I eighty and.
Absolutely. Yep, we are meeting tomorrow with HDR and their stratcom team and we're going to finalize those graphics. And they'll get pushed out through Angie's team as well as our Forest Grove website later this week.
Would be great to be able to show the council exactly what's going to, how that's going to transpire.
Absolutely. Couple of things also in the arterial collector. You know, it's of the FY twenty-three dollars that you're seeing, almost thirteen million, ten million of that is in Forest Grove. And that's ten million from the cities in, not including the federal aid money that is left. So that was about a six million dollar federal aid award, five point nine seven. We've spent maybe two million of that, so you got about three, three and a half maybe, that's still left there. So that gets you to that, really to that thirteen million.
Are you tracking whether it's costing us over and above what it would have been had we passed, swapped out that?
No real way to track it with swap. I would love to.
No, I'm pissed off.
I would absolutely love to.
Not at anybody here.
We've got about thirty million total investment out there. So that includes all the projects that we've talked about. There's still one more phase of road to be bid this winter, which would go from the east side of middle on Forest Grove. To the end of the FG eighty property. So that'll get you through one more roundabout of competition and then taper out. That's all included in the development agreement and that's in these numbers. So that'll get bid this year and that should, everything should be wrapped up next year. We've had a lot of discussions with contractors and I think we've worked out a lot of things that, moving forward, I expect a much smoother and more efficient project. Below the arterial collector, that bridge, we know that's another big one out there as well.
And that includes trails too?
Yes, absolutely want to say. So it's, you can see we've got about a ten million dollar price tag. That's what we had submitted for our destination Iowa grant. That includes design of the bridge, that includes construction administration of the bridge, that includes the bridge itself. It includes a very large amount of trail, so we don't end up with a bridge to nowhere. There's about a million dollars in trails just to fill the gap heading east to Forest Grove School. So as part of all of our road projects, we're building trails, but there will be a gap across the Ben Horse property that still exists there. So we would hope to fill that gap and it would also include filling the gap down the middle road to connect to Hopewell. You know, we'd really hate to build all these trails in and around the area and then not be able to get to them. So some of that is, or all that is included in there.
The question, my recollection was, the last time we talked about a pedestrian bridge, we were talking about three million dollars. What's the current number for the bridge itself?
So the bridge itself is six and a half, seven million. The initial, the initial EDA grant that we submitted, if I'm not wrong, was six million total.
It was just under six million on that. And that was the federal EDA, not the state.
Correct.
Just under six.
Now that also, when we submitted that one, had very little design. So now that they've actually done a little bit of schematic design to detail it, and we've also had a year and a half worth of construction cost increase, unfortunately. So that, that is the current cost and obviously we predicated a lot of that initially on the ability to obtain some grant funding. And that has not come to fruition, excuse me.
We're still working on that.
Yeah, we gotta go back to that.
Traffic, kind of the same, the same general amounts you see. There's a little bit of an increase in twenty-three and twenty-five, because there's new traffic signals being constructed. So twenty-three would include the middle and twenty-ninth that's about to go live. And twenty-five has a new signal at Devil's Glen and Forest Grove that we project will be needed by that point, once we complete all the improvements to Devil, or to Forest Grove and Middle.
Or, I'm sorry. Devil's Glen.
And Forest Grove.
Forest Grove.
Yeah.
Is that, is that going to be when the, when it's widened or before that?
That would probably be before that. Actually, per the, the schedule that we have laid out in the CIP, that would be before that.
When, when do you think that would happen?
Right now, it's in twenty-five.
Okay.
We project that.
All right, thank you.
The signal's in twenty-five, not the widening.
Right.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. The widening's a couple of years after that. And, and honestly, when we go into the detour next year, we're going to have a year, a continued year of having to detour traffic down to Forest Grove and Devil's Glen. But that also has an opening now east-west. We may have to, have to do something out there. We're not going to put up a temporary signal, but we may have to throw up temporary stop signs or something if the traffic volumes get as heavy as they might. We'll have to see how, how people choose to go.
It's a lot easier to get on there now that Forest has been closed.
Yeah, that's right.
Absolutely.
You just leave it that way.
That, that, that might be a, a strong four-way stop, Brent, in the interim with, with flashing lights.
Talking through, and we've just got to see, kind of like the discussion we had earlier, Bill, we've just got to see what the traffic, which way people go.
Yeah.
Right.
They go east or they go west.
It's hard to go west from Devil's Glen.
Yeah, during normal traffic considerations. Sure. Those are kind of the very high-level silos. Want to go into any more detail? We'll kind of leave it up to.
Well, I think all we're doing tomorrow is setting a public hearing, and you've got the stuff here to look at. There's certainly, I went through, I've got some questions, uncircled some things. But remember, we get to spend the weekend together going through these things, so. Does anybody have any specific questions on specific things tonight? Give us an opportunity to look at it. You don't have to go through and say what, we know what Boulevard Restoration Offset and Funding from Grading Permit generally is, and there's not a lot of money there.
I don't see a line item, Your Honor, for boulders.
They've disappeared. Do see the guard rail, but.
That's insult to injury.
Boulders look a lot better down in I seventy-four.
Yeah, there you go.
Maybe even retiring employees a clock, give them a boulder with their name engraved on it.
I think they like the clock better.
They went out the bargain lane?
Yeah. You poor guy, the boulders, oh, boy.
It was a good idea at the time.
We got it done.
Any questions about anything else specific? You can take a look at it. Obviously, everybody's open to talking to you, but we should talk about any, like, real concerns about amounts of money together. Are we good with, this is your presentation for tonight?
Perfect.
Yeah, okay. Gentlemen, thank you very much. So, Your Honor, tomorrow night. Specific questions will, will come to you. Tomorrow night, we're going to set the public hearing on the budget. You've got your dates for the budget. We'll be here at least for that Saturday, and we'll get the Monday presentation. That's when you'll get all of this. You also get the other side of the revenue and expenses. Lisa, did you have anything, any questions?
Nope.
Nope.
Okay. All right, so our presentations have been completed. Are there any operational items on tomorrow night's agenda? Any particular council member would like to discuss at this time? Any items to be added? All right, I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn.
Submit.
We stand adjourned. Tomorrow night, we do have a very special mayor for the day.
Mayor for the day tomorrow night.
He's actually a mayor. Mike Tombs will be joining us. I'll be taking him to dinner before. He will have lots of questions for the rest of you. He spent a pretty penny to spend an evening with me to Rivermount Collegiate. Of course, his grandkids go to school there, but we'll have some fun. I may sit in the peanut gallery and let him run the meeting. Let's see if he can get it done.